Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, thank you for coming to the extraordinary meeting of the Town Council of the twenty-third of April, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, as the town clerk, I'm chairing the first few items on the agenda this evening. Um, and I would just like to explain that, um, as we have sadly received a resignation of the chairman and vice chairman. The uh first items on the agenda have to be the um election of a new chairman and vice chairman. And that's the reason that the public participation has been moved to the end of the meeting. So the first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Um, I have received apologies from uh councillors Emma Blackmore and Jenny Eastman. Are there any other apologies from the floor, please? No, thank you. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is to receive and accept the resignation of the chairman of the council. We have received the um notification of resignation of the chairman of the council from Mr Ben Aldridge. Um, may I please have a proposer and a seconda from the council to accept his resignation? Thank you. May I have a show of hands, please, to accept the resignation? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to elect a chairman for the council. Do I have any proposers for chairman of the council? Thank you.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Thank you. In that case, councillor Roger Whitfield, you are duly elected chairman of the town council. Would you please take the seat? No, because there's no other. Yes, I need to read it out, Richard. Want to see it, don't we not?
I, Roger Whitfield, having been elected to the office of chairman of Portishead Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil it according to my judgment.
Thank you. I can confirm as the proper officer of the council, I have countersigned the acceptance of office.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to receive and accept the resignation of the vice chair of the council. So do I have a proposer for that? Martin?
Proposing it, unfortunately, that Paul should be done, be released.
Okay, so that's Martin and Alan, yeah? Do we need to take a vote? So can you all raise your hands? You're in favour of that? Okay, that's passed. The next item on the agenda is to elect a vice chairman of the council. Um, I would like to pose Mike Johnson. Do I have a seconda? Martin? David? And all those in favour? We have a declaration? Yes. Okay, bear with us a second, we're just gonna do the paperwork.
Oh, come on, this is not.
I'm Mike Johnston, having been elected to the office of vice chairman of Portishead Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best judgment and ability.
Thank you. I can confirm as proper officer of the town council, I have countersigned the acceptance of office for the vice chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Wendy. So now we come to declaration of councillors' interests and requests for dispensations. Does anybody have any interests that they need to declare for this meeting? Okay, thank you. Uh, before we go to public participation, I've just got a couple of messages that I'd like to give. And then we'll be able to get straight on with that part of the meeting. Uh, due to the short notice of this meeting, some of your councillors have been unable to attend because they have prior engagements. They wanted you to know that they have all discussed and agreed what we have voted on tonight at this meeting. We're all sad and disappointed that Ben and Paul have decided not just to resign their positions as chair and vice chair, but also to resign their seats as councillors. As Portishead has grown and the town council has expanded the services it provides, the positions of chair and vice chair have become more demanding, placing extensive pressures on those who volunteer to fill these roles. Both Ben and Paul work full-time, have families and give lots of their time to support the community. Ben spent four years as a town councillor before becoming the chair. He worked hard as the chair of community matters, delivering on community projects that benefit everyone. Ben took a lead role in the excellent skate park project, spending countless hours ensuring that it was delivered on time and within budget. He volunteers for the fantastic Portishead Christmas lights and is always available for health and safety and marshalling duties at many of the town's events. Paul has worked tirelessly as a councillor and as vice chair. He has been an asset to his community. Paul has always taken his duties seriously and acted in a kind and thoughtful way. He should take great pride in the work he does within his community, which includes regenerating the community in Northwestern, protecting Western Bigwood, as well as his work on the wellbeing agenda, arranging the decoration of the Northwestern Bus Shelter and his involvement in the Panda Discos and much, much more. All of your councillors want to express their sincere thanks to Ben and Paul for everything they have done for Portishead. I know that all of your councillors offered their support in finding a way to retain them in the council. We had all tried to convince them to remain, but ultimately, we all respect their decision to step away from the council at this time. We can only hope that in the future they may decide to come back. I have the greatest of respect for Ben and Paul, and it has been a great privilege to serve on the council with them, and I wish them both well for the future. All of your councillors have asked that we show our appreciation for Ben and Paul by putting our hands together. So, without further ado, we move on to the public participation session of the meeting. Um, this is your opportunity to have your say to the council on items that are on the agenda. Um, this is not an opportunity for people to have a personal go at individuals. So just ask you all to um direct your questions and your statements to the council and not to individuals. Uh, do we have somebody who'd like to go first?
Or I could raise my voice, of course. I would just like to know, in the light of what you have just said, why this meeting was originally planned as a vote of no confidence in your chairman and vice chairman that was due to be held last night? So why was there a vote of no confidence if you think, you all think so highly of Ben and Paul?
So so that ra- that raises the question, really, I guess, is what you're trying to say is, who called the vote of no confidence?
No, no, you've already said, do not make this personal. I am not. I'm an outsider. I don't know what's going on. But I just do not understand, on the one hand, how at one point there can be a plan for a vote of no confidence. And on the other hand, all of you, because you said it was everybody, all of you have been praising Ben and Paul to the gummels. I mean, I quite understand they are busy people. I quite understand how demanding the role of chairman and vice chairman is. But I don't understand why there was proposed a vote of no confidence and then all this praise. It's not that I don't think they deserve the praise, I am just somewhat dumbfounded by it, and that's why I ask the question.
Okay, e- equally, I believe that um that we were all dumbfounded by a meeting being called with a vote of no confidence. So all of your councillors here um did not call for it.
Well, in that case, how could it happen?
And, and, and did not want it.
Well, how did it happen then? Because it takes three councillors to call an extraordinary general meeting. So who did then?
So could I just ask the clerk to confirm how many councillors it takes to call an EGM and who called the previous one?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, the chairman of the town council can call an extraordinary meeting at any time. Um, the extraordinary meeting, which was scheduled for yesterday, was called by the chairman and vice chairman of the council.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we have people, um, no doubt with hearing aids and people online who won't be able to hear anything unless it's spoken into a microphone. So Laura said then that um that she doesn't believe that that answers the question. Um, I, I believe it does answer the question.
I should clarify that I meant, obviously, I know that the chairman can call an extraordinary general meeting, as could you now, councillor Whitfield. Um, but if it's not the chairman, then it has to be three councillors who ask for a meeting.
Yeah, so we've clarified that it was the chairman.
So the chairman called a meeting of no confidence in himself?
That is very much what it looks like, yes.
Okay.
As I said, we
I remain dumbfounded and I will say no more.
Yeah, we, we feel the same. Paul Churchill.
Thank you. I just wanna read a statement out. It's not a question, it's just a, a statement. Um, so to Portishead residents, Portishead Town Council officers and councillors, it has been a huge privilege and honour to serve on this council for the past two and a half years and as vice chair for the past year. I am extraordinarily grateful for the trust that the South Ward of Portishead residents bestowed on me when I was elected in two thousand and twenty-one and again in two thousand and twenty-three. Also for the confidence shown by the councillors who nominated and elected me last year as vice chair. I have done my best to serve this town and the council in all that I have done. As councillors, we didn't always agree, nor should we. It is in debate that our differences, uh, is in debating our differences that we have represented our town as the tough decisions have to be made. I am in no doubt that you were all here because you want to make a difference. I very much hope that that continues with whoever the next councillor is representing the South Ward and within the town council as a whole. I hope that the respect and integrity towards all residents, officers and each other, which I hope I have demonstrated during my time as a councillor, is continued. I believe as elected councillor, this is something we should all uphold. I consider myself as very fortunate to have had an incredible team of officers to work with, true public servants, who work so hard with passion, resilience, integrity, creativity and full of talent. I would like to thank you all for your guidance and support during my time. Let's all be sure to keep nurturing them and show them our appreciation. Anyone who has been a councillor will know that it takes up not an insignificant amount of one's time and has only been possible with the unwavering support I've received firstly and most importantly from family. And so a huge thanks to my wife and grandchildren, and secondly to work, who have been extremely understanding and supportive, changing travel arrangements and meetings, et cetera, at last minute. Yes, some of us do work full-time. And finally, residents, in me, you will have a lifelong champion for our great town. And councillors, I wish you all the best. Thank you once again and wish you good luck for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Would anybody else like to speak? Uh, Carolyn? Need to push your mic button, please.
Do I have to hold it down?
No, just release it. No, that's good. Thanks.
You hear me okay. Uh, my first time speaking at a council meeting. Um, can I just say right now I don't give permission for any filming or recording other than the main one the council I know will be doing? Okay, so you can switch off the phone. That would be great. Um, so yeah, my first time talking at a council meeting, so excuse me if I sound very, very nervous because I am actually shitting myself. Um, and I know that every word will be dissected, twisted, posted online with a few insults, but there you go. My question to you guys is, how are you genuinely? Sorry, I'm getting really nervous now. How are you? Because I can see, um, you know, that morale must be pretty low right now. I'm really sad to see the resignations of Ben and Paul. They will be sadly missed. And a big loss to our town, I think. Um, it hasn't gone unnoticed, the amount of abuse, time wasting from people who've admitted they only do it for entertainment, the frustration and the barriers you must face from North Somerset. Um, the witch hunt, and I'm quoting from the editor of the North Somerset Times, that forced three councillors resignations, um, another councillor resigning because of stress, the clerk feeling threatened enough to have to employ a security guard at a meeting and plans being given due to behaviour. It's fair to say that you have a very challenging and let's not forget voluntary role. And I wonder if you have any plans to enable, encourage and retain councillors and future councillors uh and future and candidates to do the job that I know that you want to do. So I ask again, how are you? Okay?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for your, your kind words there. I, I think we all recognise um what, what you're saying there. And, and I think everyone round here realises that, that this isn't the easiest of jobs to do and sometimes it's not the easiest of environments to do this job in. But I think equally everybody around this table is committed to doing their best for Portishead, and that's what we're here for. So sometimes we have to, we have to take it on the chin and have thick skin. But um, but I think it's worth it for our town. Anybody else? Laura?
Well, put it on that table and I'll go over that. Thank you. This actually is quite closely tied to what Carolyn's just said. Um, when I emailed in my request to speak tonight, I included a link and a plea for everybody to listen to a speech that I gave to Full Town Council in September, two thousand and twenty-one. The reason that I did that is because so much of what I said in that speech is still relevant. The actions that I discussed with the sitting clerk at the time, who called me in for a private meeting. Based on that, she developed quite an extensive suggested programme of training um and other support. But it was voted down by the council at the time, unfortunately. But everything I'm about to say is perfectly clear in the context of that speech that I gave. And I'm happy for it to be noted in the minutes that I would like a link sent to any residents who might inquire about that speech because it matters. I recall a comment made by councillor Whitfield about eight months ago, and this is word for word. I am not a fan of the public participation section of meetings as some people use it as a platform to air their political views instead of being constructive. I have already spoken to councillors about the problems with public participation. I expect that there will be some changes over the next few years as we attempt to improve the situation. I ask the council to give reassurances that public participation will remain a platform for residents to raise their concerns and that you aren't intending to create a situation where members of the public may only speak if they're bringing good news and solutions. Having a public platform for residents to speak about their concerns is vital for transparency. Please also offer clarification on the line which seemingly objects to residents airing political views. If a public council meeting designed for residents to engage with our elected representatives is not an appropriate place for politics, where is? Yesterday, councillor Whitfield kindly sent me a lengthy email after listening to my speech in which he said, I have personally reviewed the behaviour policy and I believe it is unclear in some key areas and in desperate need of review and possibly a rewrite. Please can the council provide assurances that clear guidance will be included about the expectations for the behaviour of councillors and staff towards residents and not just vice versa? I have personal reasons for requesting that. I was going to give detail, but actually I don't think that's appropriate now. If anyone wants to know about the bad experiences I received, which were bullying and intimidating, gaslighting, you can ask me. I will happily share. But I just want to iterate from my, reiterate from my speech in two thousand and twenty-one that now is the time to ask for help. I think you've been trying to do too much in-house for too long. I think it is time for external eyes to come into this setting and offer advice on best practice. Because it just isn't working and all it's doing is, or all the methods to date have done have damaged relations. I'm gonna quote my own speech now. In all good faith and sincerity, I ask that your policies are urgently taken for review and I ask that Portishead Town Council commissions regular equalities training and seeks some professional support services for its members and its staff. Because you're just trying to do too much on your own. You know, so often we're asked to remember that councillors are only human. That's true. Humans need support. And actually, yes, we will make mistakes. We need support to make things better. A big part of being human and making our mistakes is also knowing when it's appropriate to hold your hand up and say, sorry, I got that wrong. And there are instances that I have experienced that I still feel like I made an apology for. But it's difficult for everybody. It's really hard. And everybody in this room is being prevented from doing their best for the town because of the atmosphere. We can fix this, but we need somebody else to come in and fix it. Okay, I've, I've finished.
Thank you very much. Uh, just, actually, before we move on, just to, just to come back on that. I mean, obviously, we can't do anything in this meeting now. Um, thank you very much for sending the, the link through. Anybody who hasn't seen it, I think, should look at it. It was a, it was a very good speech. Um, and there are lots of things in there that I think as a council we should be taking on board. So we will be, we will be looking into this. What I'd like us to do as a council, when we, when we start to put together new policies, is to, um, is to speak to the public and, and get a view from outside of this council as to, as to what also works, not just what works for councillors, but what works for staff, what works for the public as well. So I think you will see some change in this area going forwards. And um, and hopefully at some point we'll be able to have a, a conversation where we can capture your, your ideas and test them against what we would like to say. So thank you very much. So who'd like to go next? Paul?
Today is a sad day for this council and for our town. Over the many years I've attended town council meetings, I have seen a few very excellent town councillors. I have also seen many that do not meet the high criteria that a councillor should, including those who are void of honesty and reliability. Both Ben and Paul were councillors of the highest integrity. They were fair, honest, trustworthy, and they fully deserved to be held in the highest esteem by those in our town. I'm quite certain that we will never know the full reasons why they felt the need to resign. However, I am also quite certain that there are people in this room who were behind that decision for whatever reason. You who played any part whatsoever in the demise of the chairman and vice chairman should feel truly ashamed of yourselves. Both Ben and Paul have shown themselves to be even-handed to both councillors and the public alike. They have treated all without ill will, favour and disdain. They have treated all without ill will, favour and disdain, and they have treated everybody with courtesy and respect. Today is a dark day for the people of Portishead. I for one would like to place on public record my sincere and heartfelt thanks to both Ben and Paul for the way that they have conducted themselves and for what they have both done for the good of our town. I am truly sorry to see them go. It may well be that both Ben and Paul had attempted to bring the behaviour of this council to an end and that that has oddly resulted in them being forced to resign. But both Ben and Paul have worked tirelessly for the benefit of this town and for its people. They deserve praise, thanks, and above all, the respect of our community. But what they have received from this council is nothing less than disgraceful. And for that, each of you who played any part in that whatsoever should feel truly ashamed of yourselves. In the words of Fraser from Dad's Army, "We are doomed."
Thank you very much for your personal opinions on that. Would anybody else like to speak? Ken.
That lady was right. This is a place to discuss politics, whether you like it or not. This is our focal, our forum, our meeting. So you can't discuss politics here, where can you? I've been coming to these meetings a long time, but you all know. There have been, in my view, three outstanding two. Ben, the skate park. Jean Lloyd and Ross Cruz, who did the youth club. Although Portishead independents tried to say that they said the youth club, they didn't. It was Ross Cruz and Jean Lloyd. When I think what, it all belonged to the Portishead Independent Party, what have they done for Portishead? In my view, very little. They put the precept up forty-five times. To join the committee, that means all miller will be knocked down, so will the home base and those big stores along there, and houses will be built all along the way. That's a great time to do this because we've got no post office, one bank that may, let's say, may not, with very few doctors. It was promised a long time on this council, there'll be no more delay until we had a new infrastructure that our people could survive. So in other, in other words, an independent party are also going to bring us parking charges. So in essence, you've done nothing for Portishead, upset to get rid of Ben and Paul. I think you're a mean nasty bunch of people. Now you can ban me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ken, for yet another opinion. Would anybody else like to speak? So.
Bit of litter. I didn't intend speaking. But I would like to say thank you to both Ben and Paul, having worked with them on the town council when I was a town councillor. I know how hard they have worked. And I, I know that you will miss all of the work and everything else that they have done for the town. So I would just like to say thank you to them and to say how sorry I am that they have felt the need to resign. And I think it is, it, it, it is very bad on the town council that they have felt like that. So I'm very, I'm very sorry to have heard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is, is there anybody online expressing a, a wish to come in at this stage? No? Okay. Anybody else from the floor? Okay, Chris. Yes.
Who's this button here, is it? Turned it off, have I? Well, I can hear myself. Right, I'd like to ask you all if I'm right. If you consider it is healthy having a chairman who's on the North Somerset Executive. These times are coming up for Portishead, are going to be, excuse me, I've got a bit of a sore throat, are going to be very tough. We've got the Windham Way thing coming over the horizon. North Somerset, in its documents behind the scenes, has already made it clear it wants to see social housing in that area. We've got some really big issues coming up and I think we could find ourselves pitted a little bit against North Somerset Executive and the council. The parking is coming up. We're getting the tip of the iceberg on that. Okay, Roger said the decision isn't make, I respect his comments on that. But I suspect we all think where this is going and we need strength in leadership to battle against it. Now, it seems to me that this resignation, sorry, has happened very quickly and the decision to vote in the new people has also been quick with two people as yet unelected to the council. And it just concerns me a bit, without being disrespectful to Roger, and I'm not going to ask you to comment on this, that he is being put in a position that he's not only leading the council, but he's also on the executive. And I don't think conflict of interest is necessarily the right expression, but I would ask you, is it healthy? And I don't know whether you want to discuss that. Maybe you don't need to, maybe you've discussed it behind the scenes.
Sorry, could you just give your name?
Sorry, Chris Clark.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, yeah, so, no, I, I take on board what you're saying and, you know, this, this has happened hastily because without a, a chairman for the council, the, the council just doesn't operate. So there, there is a, you know, it had, this had to happen quite quickly once the resignations came in. We, we obviously had a meeting last night and these exact issues were, were spoken through. And I believe Tim would like to speak to this.
All right, yeah, the reason I propose Roger as well as being North Somerset District Councillor is so we can get a stronger link between Portishead and North Somerset. I do think that's very important. And at this moment in time, I think Roger is perfect for that, so we have a, a fluid link between the two. And I think it'd work a lot better that way.
So we're saying that going along with North Somerset is the way forward, rather than being free to react against anything that they're trying to impose on us?
I wouldn't say go along with, I would rather say work.
Okay. Okay, well, as I say, as somebody, I mean, I worked in the city, attended various board meetings, and I know that healthy debate is always the way forward. And you just can't help feeling with, with greatest respect, the balance in the room is that you're all very friendly and healthy debate with different opinions always is the way forward. And I don't know whether we're getting that with the council, maybe if two new people come on board who are of different political thinking, maybe that would be healthy for the council. Now, I'm, this is the first one I've attended, so I apologise. I'm probably not the best person to speak in this way. All I know is what I read on social media and I just think for the benefit of everybody, it's good to have strong debate with opposite opinions sometimes, as opposed to all being a little too friendly.
No.
Okay, I think I've made my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Your question.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak now? Okay, before you come back, Laura, anybody who hasn't spoken would like to speak? Okay, Laura, if you want to come back up?
What is the platform for finding out the outcomes of matters raised in this meeting? Because it's an extraordinary general meeting, so there's no sort of timetabled follow-up to it, is there? How do we find, because I asked a lot of questions which didn't get answered. So where do I go to, to find out if any action is taken?
Yeah, so we, we've captured your questions. The minutes will be published as, as usual. And when we look to set the agenda for other meetings, because this isn't the right meeting for, for us to discuss or set policy on these items, we'll be looking to insert those into other meetings where they're appropriate.
Okay, so you digest it all and then between you, you decide which issue goes to different meetings for further discussion?
To, to which committee, yeah.
Okay, that's.
And, and, you know, we, we understand that, that you've, you've got some very important information to give. And as I said before, we will be asking you to, to come back and, and share your views on, on where we are and where we're going as well. And, and there will be an invitation to other members of the public to do the same because I think we move forward from this point with the public, not without the public.
Okay. Just fin- finally, proper finally, I do feel compelled to say I was a little bit disappointed with the way you commented as Ken and Paul were sitting down. I don't think the nature of that response is going to be helpful in building better relationships with everybody in the room. It was just the tone you used, I didn't really think was the best under the circumstances.
And equally, the wild speculation that they, they managed to insert in amongst
However, you are the chairman. You are the chairman. Yeah. This is all, you have to hold yourself to the higher standard. Yeah?
Yes, we all need to expect one another.
But you can't regulate the public. You can regulate yourself. I mean, it was just a comment, an observation.
As I said, I thanked them for their personal views that they gave us.
Okay, so.
And, and they were their personal views. And I did that to acknowledge that there was a lot of stuff in there that wasn't fact.
You know, there was insinuation in your tone.
I wouldn't like members of the public, sorry, I wouldn't like members of the public to, to believe that everything that is said in this chamber comes across as fact.
Well, then you need to create a platform for that.
Wild speculation now.
So you need to create a platform for that and don't use your tone of voice for that low level passive aggression, because that's what wound me up. Be better, choose to stop it.
It's, it's very, it's very difficult sometimes for people to, to understand. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Sorry, before you go ahead, Annette wanted to speak next. You know, no, sorry, that next after you, yes? I just, I'm just trying to get, just trying to get a feel for how many people still want to speak. So after you, and then Annette, does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, that's fine. It's just to, to give us an idea of how long each person needs and whether or not we're going to run out of time, but clearly we're not. Sorry, carry on.
Okay.
It's, it's limited to two hours as per standing orders, I believe, so that will take us to nine o'clock.
Okay. Okay, my name is Anne Townsend. I do give permission for my name to be entered into the minutes. Thank you. I wasn't going to speak this evening, but I was a bit concerned about what Laura said about public participation. I think Janet Davy will support me when I say that without public participation, her and I and members of, of residents and various groups would not have been successful with the golf course. As you know, we ended up with town village green status and all that was based on being able to come here and speak to you guys, people like you, and we were supported by quite a number of people in our town. Janet, if you get a chance to support the public participation and understand just how important it is for our town and democracy, please do so because otherwise, as Laura said, we might be thinking that things are not all, all well at Portishead Town Council. Okay? The other thing I'd like to do is thank very much Paul and Ben, fantastic advocates for this town. As you know, I don't come to the meetings as often as I used to. I do have other campaigns that I'm running, so I can't always get involved in local stuff. But I, I keep an eye on local issues because they're, they're really important to me. I like to understand what's going on in my town. And I have to say that I would like discourse to be a bit more professional. I think you, one should allow public to speak, to give their views and don't send them away also with a clip in the air. That's, that's how it came over to me as well, I was totally honest. So I, I thought it was quite disrespectful. I was a public servant myself for quite a hundred years. There were an awful lot that I had to, if you like, put up with. That was my job. If I didn't like my job, I could always leave. I didn't leave because I actually quite liked people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I think I'd like to say on that one that in the past, we've all probably used public participation in one campaign or another that, that we've done when we haven't been members of this council. I recall coming to the, this town council many years ago and obtaining funding for a cover on the open air pool. So public participation is really important. Without, without that public participation, we wouldn't have had the open air pool, we wouldn't have had lots of things, we wouldn't, probably wouldn't have had a skate park, to be totally honest. So public participation is really important and I think it's just important that, that we get it right. And, and we, and we ask the public how to do that because we, we're in this together, aren't we? When it comes to the public participation, we, we need to do our bit as councillors, you need to do your bit as, as the public. And, and hopefully if we talk about it together, we can work out a way to make it work for all of us. Annette, would you like to come up now?
Good evening, everybody. And I hope you don't mind if I just turn it, I don't like if I went back to the, the public. Firstly, can I just say that I was going to actually say what you said, Laura, with regard to the tone in the room? And I did notice that Chairman, you made comments after certain members of the public spoke, but then other people who said things which were quite unjustified and quite nasty towards people outside of the meeting, quite, you know, rude and discourteous, you never said a thing. The fact that that person might be related to a councillor perhaps is part of it, but it's slightly worrying that you seem to be not consistent with how you deal with members of the public and that is a point that needs to be changed. You have got to deal with the public irrespective of what they say, as long as they're courteous and polite, which I think people are, in the same manner. You may not like other people who hold you to account and in fact probably are able to watch what you're doing a little bit more than you can remember what you're saying, but you've got to treat people the same. Now, with regard to your address, you made comment about people being busy, having family lives, working. I think that the people, the two, the chairman and the, the vice chairman from 2023 to now have been the most hardworking councillors I have seen in this hall representing Portishead Town Council. And Ben doesn't just chair the Portishead Town Council meeting, he was a volunteer in Portishead, seen at every event. He was a hardworking family member, father and husband. He also worked full-time, but you seem to be using it as if it was a bad thing. You know, you have your own business, you're, I think, as, as someone's already commented, you're actually executive, executive of North Somerset Council. So you go to lots of meetings. I often think, well, are you actually going to have time to represent the people of Portishead? And we've already seen some anomalies with regard to parking charges, which I have highlighted. You might not like me highlighting them, but I am free to do so. Now, we have had problems over the last five years, four years, from 2019 to 2023, with public participation, which has been raised. It was an appalling four years, years that we have never seen in this council before. And not just in the council, on social media, it was appalling. And not just in the council, on social media, it was appalling. To the extent that people sat at this meeting fabricated information and were found out about it and they were held accountable. The same people often stand on social media saying, oh, you've got no right to raise concerns about the council if you don't attend meetings. You've got no right to talk about councillors unless you want to stand with the council yourself. No, 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 that's not true. When you put yourself forward as councillors, you put yourself forward to represent the public. Not your party, not yourself, but the town. And I have only seen Ben Aldridge and Paul Churchill putting this town first. I cannot say the same about other people. And we don't need to mention names. I think most people know who I'm speaking about. So it's really important that you recognise that and you try to address that problem, which is what Laura has actually asked you to do. And what was interesting is when we were coming on to the resignations, I saw councillors nodding their heads. And I know some were doing it genuinely. But sadly, I know that some weren't. And so saying the right things when we're in a public space is not necessarily enough. You've got to do the right things all the way through. And from two thousand and twenty-three, when Ben and Paul became chairman and vice chairman, there was a lovely air of safety when residents came to meetings. They felt as if they were being listened to. Ben and Paul were selfless in their delivery of what they needed to do for Portershead Town Council and for our town. They worked hard. They were committed. They were fair. They were open. They were honest. And they were transparent. And if they made a mistake or felt something needed to be done differently, they acknowledged that. And I can't say the same about others. And let's remember, this council is controlled by the Portershead Independent Political Party. And you yourself, Chairman, keep telling everybody you're independent. You need to start by taking a lesson out of Ben Aldridge's book and realise that you need to be honest at all times as you, in your position as chairman. Because we know you're not independent. If you wanted to stand as a true independent, you could have been done. Every single one of you.
Annette, sorry, we are, we're starting to stray here.
Okay.
Into, into items, which aren't really for this council.
Well, I'm trying to understand.
But you, you can come to me.
No, 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 thank you. I don't feel that.
Directly.
I don't feel that that would be a safe space.
But we're here for the council.
Let me finish. You talked about political things. And this is opinion. You gave your opinion. And the public are here to give theirs. And you talked about people coming here and you don't like them talking about political things. I can remember pre-two thousand and nineteen, people that are part of your party stood in that public gallery, laying into the previous administration, actually aggressively laying into them to say how bad it was all.
We are, we are again straying out, out of the realms of what this, what this meeting is for.
You cannot have it always. You cannot say you don't want politics. But then your party members engaged in that. But I will round out. I would like to say thank you to Ben Aldridge and Paul Churchill. And I feel, um, I could get quite close to tears. I feel that, as Paul Mortby said, this is a dark day for our council. Because I happen to know what has gone on and those people will, the rest of the town will find out in due course. Knowing that those two councillors worked so hard and one in particular walked away from the political party he was elected under back in February because of the treatment he was engaged in, I think says a really bad thing about Portishead. And it upsets me that something like that can go on in my hometown in the Portershead Town Council, unseen by members of the public, unseen by the people who are asking questions online. That is not acceptable and is not satisfactory. And as Paul Mortby said in his address, anyone who's sat here tonight and anyone who's taken the positions of two good councillors, you should hang your heads in shame. And while you are town councillor chairman, I will never attend another town council meeting. Um, thank you, Ben and Paul. You have been excellent advocates for Portishead. Your unfailing work cannot be questioned in any way. And when you leave the meeting tonight, you leave with your head high, knowing you were completely blameless. And that if you'd had your chance and you would, you know, your wish had been granted, you would have still stayed on. And we would have had you as vice chairman and chairman for another year. And hopefully remaining in the town council for another four years. Um, your loss, um, will be effectively be felt by Portishead for a long time to come. And sadly, I don't think your calibre of councillor is here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Annette. So unless there's anybody else who'd like to come up and speak, I think we can call this meeting to a close. Is there anybody online who'd like to speak? Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to speak? In which case, the date of the next meeting is the annual town council meeting on the eighth of May, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty PM back in this hall. Thank you very much.